Signature was coerced.
All right.
Help me.
Okay, you ready in the back, Ben? All right. Oh, my log address. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I welcome everyone this evening to the School District of Waukesha, the full Board of Education meeting on December 12th. It's great to see you here tonight. It's really great to see all the students in the audience tonight. We almost have more students than adults. That would be wonderful if we always had all students. Let's join together in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's stand for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know if you guys heard that, but the students definitely outperformed the parents. Good job, you guys, on the pledge. Do you do that every once in a while?
Every day.
Are you sure?
English, Spanish.
Great job. Great job. So, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart. Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Deetz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And so, will you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. This evening, I'd like to start with a poem. And the name of the poem is "The Peace of Christmas." As Christmas comes near, the world changes. We see people's attitudes and caring ways. People helping people, really doing their best to ensure this Christmas is one that will bring happiness. A time of the year when the heart is open, to help others and to love one another. If only this attitude could last all year long, our world would be so much more peaceful and happiness would be for all. And that's by Katherine Pulcifer.
Thank you.
What a nice poem.
Thank you.
And it is the season. Moving on tonight, we have Principal Mark Schneider from higher to talk about how Avid is being incorporated at the elementary school level. And that's, this is the first year that we're doing that. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, thanks for having me. I'm so proud to have our higher team here today, both our staff and our students, who are going to present our Avid journey and how we've implemented Avid at the elementary level, at higher elementary. Okay, there we go. So, the mission and vision of higher elementary really aligns with Avid and with Avid's mission. So, the higher community is committed to developing high-achieving learners for college career and global community readiness by providing a nurturing and rigorous academic environment. And what is Avid? Well, Avid is advancement via individual determination. It's a K-12 system, and it's meant to prepare all students for college careers and their future lives. So, it's a system to ensure all students are prepared for the future, not by default, but by design. We know many have an opportunity because of their situation, whether it's their home life or they have somebody that is lifting them up to make sure that they are going to be successful in their future. Well, Avid is a system that designs programming and helps us with the how to get kids into college and help them get ready for their careers. At the secondary level, Avid is more of an elective, and it's not for all students. For elementary, it's for all of our students. And we begin with implementation at third grade. And I'm proud to introduce our third-grade team with Ms. Yasmin Duran, Rachel Delacotte, and Correl Corridor, who are going to lead us with their journey of implementation.
Hi, good night. Ms. Duran, we know that the WICER, Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading are all foundational skills and pillars in order for our students to be successful. So, starting off with our third graders this year, we really wanted to make sure that they were organized and that they had all their things ready to learn. And along with that, that they collaborate and begin to use organizers and note-taking strategies that will help them be more successful in the future. So, they have prepared a little presentation for all of you tonight on how they keep organized and why it's important in third grade. All right, and we're going to begin over here.
Hi, I'm Leila Wassley and...
I'm a kid, so I don't know what to do.
Well, having our binders is really important because it keeps us organized. And if you're not organized, then, well, in middle school, like my sister, you have to have everything organized and perfect for your classes to get there right on time. And if it's not ready, then you're going to be late and you're going to get in trouble.
It's important to have our pencil pouch. What we have... Oh, I forgot to say my name. My name is Andrea, and we have a pencil pouch where we put all of our things. For example, we have Post-its, a highlighter, two pencils, a glue stick, a pen, and Post-its and eraser. They help us organize because whenever we don't have a pencil pouch and we're looking all over our basket, then we wouldn't find everything we need for classes. And that's it.
We have an agenda that we keep all our goals in, like week goals. And then we also put our homework in it to make sure we know what to do for our homework. It's important to achieve our goals because we could get higher grades.
My name is Armani Robertson. And in the reading thoughtful log, there are four sections. And in one of the sections, there's a strategy section. And that is where we put all our strategies and finding out the main purpose of the book.
Hello, my name is Elliot. And it's good that we have math thoughtful logs because we can keep our stuff organized and we can solve problems, math problems, and share our thinking, have vocabulary and strategies. So then, we can solve problems.
Hi, my name is Lyndon Outers. And our S D L, Self-Emotional Learning, habit is so that when we aren't ready to learn, we can go to that page and we can look at all of our breathing and how we can calm ourselves down so then we can be ready to learn. A successful student can be successful in many ways. Like, they can persevere and work, and they can respect others. There are many other ways that you can be a successful student. But the real part of being a successful student is courage. You need to have courage so then you can learn and you can be on track so then you can get a good grade on your report cards.
Students created, successful students, like pictures that are on the covers of their binders so they can remember what skills they need to be ready for future years in Waukesha and also when they move on to college and careers. And we also had a family night where parents also generated the same ideas, same thing, what do you think your child needs to be a successful student in our community?
Now, school board, now board members, now it's your turn to see how you can be successful.
Yes.
Well, give me one. Thank you, you did a nice job.
I guess we do now.
So now, our higher students are going to talk to our school board members on what a successful board member is and what the dispositions they believe are essential in order to be a successful board member. What character traits and abilities do you need to possess to be successful?
You've got to know a lot about what goes on in our schools. You've got to know what it's important for students to learn. And then you have to make sure that happens.
Okay, go ahead.
And you've got to go to a lot of meetings. We go to meetings two or three days every week. That's a lot of time. Even in the summertime, when you don't go to school, we still come here and go to meetings. It's a big, big job. But you know what? I used to be a third-grade teacher. That wasn't one of the most wonderful grades levels I ever taught. So, I thought you kids did a wonderful job tonight. What do you like best about third grade?
And then you have people that work for you. They're called assistants superintendent. Sometimes they don't listen to you. Sometimes, you know, you've got to, you know, get the message across.
To be on time.
There's two of them. Aren't they nice people? And then there's some over there. See? And then some days, you have to have a lot of courage.
Wonderful, very good. Do you have any sisters or brothers?
If we were even like kids, we'd be doing a wrong job.
Older?
Sometimes you have to get up early.
Are we supposed to be writing?
And do your older sisters help you?
See, now, I was not following instructions. Okay.
Do I? Am I unsparadigms? Well, that's just... What do you want me to do with you?
He's our IT director.
I do? To ask questions?
Good. Just probably this week, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Do you read them all?
Do you want me to print?
Either one.
Oh, I'm going to put on some boots.
Yeah, okay.
Stand firm.
He's my spirit. Give him a nice letter on all the...
Hang on, comfortable. You have to get on.
Are you getting something too?
Yes. And what is right for you guys? Two weeks, good, two weeks. Let's see, I'm going to put some money.
And we have to organize. I mean, I think you guys are teaching us about... We get sent every week.
S D W, do you know what S D W means? Spend, money, waste, waste.
Certain things. Much of the blue because we're not on that committee. So, we have organization.
I wonder if your name... Armani, nice to meet you. You're doing a great job tonight. Well, here's a few things. You probably heard some of these. You need to be a good listener, right? Because we need to understand what people are talking about. So, we need to... We need to be able to talk about our ideas.
I'm trying to put my hands together.
Right? Just like you guys are doing tonight. You're doing a great job. And we need to have muscles to take action, right? We've got to go do stuff. I think one of the biggest things is we need a big heart to care for other people. And some good ideas to help plan and strategize.
And ideas?
Armani, what grade is this? What grade are you in?
Okay, I know we have a long agenda for the school board. We just wanted to make sure that you guys understood that we made a plan for being successful board members and were able to collaborate with some of our students on what makes us successful.
Thank you.
Thank you for your collaboration and sharing this activity with us.
Thank you, Mark.
You want the papers?
Are there any questions for myself or our wonderful students or teachers?
We have to keep them.
Yeah, we want you to keep those so you remember as you're making decisions and thinking about...
You lost control, Mark.
Good thing I'm not the board president.
Yes.
I think I just learned a whole bunch. Any questions for our students at higher? Amanda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Was it the young lady who had the reading log? What are the... You said there's four sections. What are those four sections in your reading log?
There's my thinking, there's strategies, there's genre, and there's language.
Very interesting, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Mr. Baumgart?
Can I ask one of the teacher staff?
Oh, sure.
Because they've been so quiet back there. No, we've used the Avid program for a number of years over at South. Now, we're expanding it into the other high schools and your schools as well. What are you seeing as one of the results we're getting out of it? Any one of you? Come on, it's got to have a benefactor.
I think a big piece is the reflection that we definitely carve out time for every day, multiple times a day. And when students are thinking about what they are doing, like while they're taking notes or how they're getting themselves organized, when they are reflecting on those decisions and those skills that they're building, they are able to come back to them and know that this is a really important skill because... So, they can explain that, and they have a deep purpose for everything that they do and the choices they're making.
Great, thank you. I can add to that. They came really well-prepared and organized tonight. And they had the courage to stand up in front of us. And it was like a piece... It was easy for you guys, right? You all made it look very easy.
One of them mentioned being Venn diagrams. And I says, there's a lot of adults around here who don't know what a Venn diagram is.
Mrs. Brusink?
Yes. I thought that the students knew what they wanted us to do, but I think they need to know what we really do. Because I don't think they really know what we really do. So, that might be something you could discuss in your classrooms, what we do. But it was wonderful, the questions that they asked and the expectations that, you know, be kind and be thoughtful. And they had some wonderful ideas about what we should do, right? Thank you for bringing them.
And Mr. O'Brien asked one of the students to share all those ideas with me to make sure I understood what was important about being a good board member. And she did fine. Any other questions? Mr. Deetz?
To the students and staff, I just, from what I heard tonight and what I saw, you're really taking ownership for your learning, even at an early age at the elementary level, and becoming active participants in your education. So, nice job. It was really good to hear your presentation and thank you for your involvement tonight.
Great. Well, thank you for your presentation. Everyone did a wonderful job. Keep up the good work. And I hope you all have a very Merry Christmas. Thank you. Moving on to our recognitions for this evening, Chris Hedstrom will present the Employee Recognition Award tonight.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Como. The Employee Recognition Award for December 2018 is being presented this evening to Andrew Ensley. Andrew, would you join me, please? Andrew started in the School District of Waukesha just last year in the 2017-18 school year. He is currently a school psychologist at Prairie Elementary School. Andrew's nominators begin by saying that Andrew has been noted as an amazing support person, and his efforts go above and beyond the expectations when addressing student needs in the emotional and social areas. Two parents from Prairie Elementary School have also spoken to district leadership about Andrew Ensley. And let me tell you that I received an email from a parent one day. I need to talk to you about Andrew Ensley. And in my world, that's never a good thing, right? But, oh my gosh, this woman was so complimentary to him. So, he has addressed this serious impact that bullying and anxiety can have on young children with thoughtfulness and sincerity. These parents feel like he has been a lifeline in supporting them as they navigate unsettled waters in their children's lives. Throughout Andrew's work as a school psychologist, he exhibits an analytical approach to his school's systems-level work as well as a district-wide perspective in student services. Andrew often questions if we are engaging in best practice in social-emotional work, special education services, and addressing the best interests of students. He genuinely wishes to do his work with high integrity to the expectations of his field of practice and to the School District of Waukesha. We know from two specific families that their children's needs are addressed in a timely and thoughtful manner, and they are in a better place now because of Andrew's efforts. In the Student Services Department, Andrew has demonstrated an interest in leadership in development of professional development and organization, to best meet the professional needs of his colleagues. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Andrew Ensley on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. I just want to say this was completely unexpected. I was very surprised to hear that I was being the one recognized this month. But I work with a lot of really great people, both at my school at Prairie and within our Student Services Department. So, thank you, Patty, for everything that you do to push us as psychologists to be the best that we can and advocate for our students and our families. But, you know, that's just what I'm here to do day in and day out. I trust in the training that I've received, and that's what I'm here to do. And that's what we're going to do each and every day just to make sure that our families are being heard and that their students are being serviced the best way they can. So, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew. There is one other small recognition I'd like to make. And this person probably doesn't want me to say anything, but happy birthday, Diane. We won't ask any questions, but just we hope you have a wonderful...
What's this "we" thing?
A wonderful evening, perhaps after the board meeting. But sincerely, happy birthday. Moving on to our student representatives, our West High School students, Jessica and Eric will be giving a report on what's happening out at Waukesha West. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Eric Hanson. I go to Waukesha West, and I am part of the club's WLA, Superfan, and like, you know, leadership committee planning and all that stuff with pep rallies. And so, one of the first things we're going to be talking about that happened at West this year in 2018 was Challenge Day. And most of you have heard that it was a very, very big event. And I'll be honest with you, at first, I was a non-believer. And I really didn't think it was going to work, but it totally proved me wrong because it had me wishing that I went and I experienced this because this is the longest conversation I've ever seen in high school in my four years. And usually, you know, when you have big events like this, they just would go and they'd fizzle away, right? It would be a really big boom and just disappear. But there's still conversations going on about this, even not just through staff and administrators that we don't want to keep going, but students also. And I, this has actually brought a big change to our school and noticing what has happened, so.
Hi, I'm Jessica Miller. I am part of our student council, Ignition, Marching Band, and WLA. Part of Ignition is doing adaptive family. We started this last year to help the Christmas Clearing Council get gifts for families and children who do not have that same privilege as all of us do. This year, they collected $4,000 worth of presents for 27 families, 52 children. Our goal was 41 families, or sorry, 41 children. And of course, we exceeded that.
So, next, like I said before, we had our leadership conference for the past, I think, five years. And I think they've been a huge help to all the athletes at West. And mainly, the biggest thing is also, like I said before, it gets kids talking. It gets them interacting. And it's also run by students. It's not run by, you know, adults and whatnot. And I'll pardon you guys, I know. But it's, I think it flows a little bit better with the students. And I recently just went to the, today, actually, the WIA in Stevens Point, the Leadership Convention there. And I could not even compare it to ours because all people did was talk. And the difference between schools and this big one is that we're actually able to interact and we're able to understand and grow from these. And like, don't get me wrong, I learned a lot from this. But what we do solo and with students, just getting them together and like, planning this, it's so much more bigger than just...
Next, right now, we are currently working on our food drive. Last year, we are, well, we're trying to beat last year's goal of 5,900 pounds worth of food. It's kind of slow right now, but we're working on it. We have a raffle going. And just, we are trying to find other ways to get students and teachers in classrooms involved because it's such a great community outreach part.
And then finally, we have our WLA Academy, which is the Leadership Academy. And the special thing about this that we've been doing is we have a bunch of different sections within it. For example, we have like some Superfan. We have special events. We have service projects that we do. And then we have like our exec board and stuff like, and certain things like that. But the most important thing is it's also run by students. And it gives a better grasp on what we need. And we're able to take those needs and create them into actual realistic things. And we're able to take those needs and create them into actual, realistic things. So, I think that's the best thing that's come with West so far during this year, especially in my four years, is that students are getting more involved, almost not just because they have to, but because they want to. They're wanting to see change in their own school, and I think it's becoming a reality.
WLA is also just a big part, because it brings more than like 20 different clubs all together in different sports. Sometimes in our school, we find a difference between activities and clubs. However, this one is meant to bring us all together. We're put in these committees so we can work together in ways that we can communicate and find better ways that we can connect our school and be more unified, especially with Challenge Day. Our exec board and Mr. Lemieux are pushing us as students to develop and unite and use the ideologies that Challenge Day has brought to us to bring to our clubs, so we can create that better and positive environment throughout West.
Do we have any questions? Ms. Voight.
Could you tell me a little bit more about your Challenge Day? Like, how...
Yeah. So, our Challenge Day is, we had three separate events that went on, and we involved students from like, you know, that really, they really just were like leaders and like in the school, and then others that weren't really involved in much. And I think that really brought everyone, even through the middle, that didn't even go to the top and being more connected, like she was saying before. And with Challenge Day too, it's not, it was talking. It was talking about people's experiences and really learning about each other, rather than just judging people by how they look. And you can actually understand their experiences.
Other questions? Yes, Ms. Brusink.
I just want you to know how proud I am of you and the leadership that you're providing within your schools. I know it's not always easy to come, to go forward and take charge, and I'm really proud of you, because you're doing a wonderful job and in getting the other students interested and engaging. So, thank you very much.
Hard to beat up the kids, so, with the little kids.
Well, thank you for your report. We will see you in another three months or so. And we look forward to hearing what's happening at West at that time.
Thank you.
We're now at the time of our meeting where we listen to our citizens address the Board of Education. As it has been past practice, we allow up to three minutes for each person to speak. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Mr. O'Brien will give you a signal to wrap it up in the next 30 seconds or so. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, and other behavior that might detract from the meeting. And also, in order to respect our speakers, please silence your phones at this time if you haven't already. We do have two speakers signed up so far for this evening. Mr. Paul Reese, followed by Kimberly Coronado.
Good evening. This is written by Isaiah about 700 years before Christ. And since it is December, I felt appropriate. For unto us a child is born, to us his son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulders, and they will call, and he will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. When I was a kid, growing up in school, in history, I loved history and I hated going to history class. I hated what was taught. When was Lincoln born and where was it? Who cares when and where he was born? I want to know what the man thought and what his aspirations were and what compelled him in life. And those type of questions, it just, it was so dry, history was. And I always had questions about things, and they're just about history and what, why things were. My dad always said, I was a kid, he thought it was weird, because I always asked, "How come?" Remember why, but it was a kid, I was always, "How come? How come?" And, but as I grew up, you know, those questions always remained, you know? And we celebrate this month the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And there is no salvation in his birth. There is no salvation in his death, Paul says, but in his resurrection through repentance. And these are questions, the birth part, why are we born even? Why, if God made all the stars in a day, why couldn't he made all of us? He says he's known us since the beginning. So, in the beginning, he knew us. He could have breathed us all into existence. So, why did he do that? What was his, what compelled him to do this? And the only thing I can come up with is, is without children, what would life be? If we didn't know this love, how could we know forgiveness? Paul goes into it in 1 Corinthians, he says, in 13:4, he says, "Love is patience; love is kind; love does not envy; it does not boast; it is not proud; it is not rude; it is not self-seeking; it is not easily angered; it keeps no record of wrongs." So, there's two things that are implied there. One, it's not easily angered, but it is angered, there is anger in there. And it keeps no record of wrongs. I mean, without a child, I wouldn't know what that is. My daughter can break something and that can pass. Someone else does the same thing, and boy, I can remember that for the next 30 years. So, it is a lesson here that God's giving us in these children, but it does come with limits. You know, you ask a parent of a heroin addict what it's like to love a heroin addict and to let them go. There, out on the streets, I have friends who are in shelters, and that, what I went to high school with.
30 seconds.
And their parents loved them, and they loved them very much and had to let them go. And so, without that birth, without that understanding of forgiveness, and that, then the Christ, his purpose would be lost. And, I have 30 seconds, or am I done?
You've got 10 more.
Oh, well, anyways, thanks and have a Merry Christmas.
Kimberly?
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Coronado. I am a parent with four children in your Waukesha School District. I want to bring my suggestions and concerns regarding special education to you. I will continuously use my voice to give you my concerns and solutions in this fashion until you are willing to address your own biases towards parents, actively involve parents instead of in local parties or in place of parents. I will keep advocating until there are shared power, collaborative and effective teams working honest to goodness, transparently. Acts of mutual respect for the families that pay your salaries as taxpayers and who voted you onto the school board. On behalf of Max, an autistic 13-year-old middle school student from California who died recently because his school district staff chose to act reactively by placing him in a face-down prone restraint instead of providing the professional development or supportive staff who would have understood that his predictive behavior, can teach him the proper skills necessary to be safe in school. Since we have Act 125, and since seclusion and restraint have been used in many special education, with many special education students in Waukesha, I urge you to revisit Act 125. I urge you also to adopt and thoroughly train all staff who have access to our children in a nonviolent, trauma-sensitive, proactive approach. Our children are not adults. They are children who need assistance, who need to be taught how to regulate their emotions, just like the avid children did today, in a socially appropriate way. They also need a professional, someone like a BCBA, who will understand that behavior is communication, and will advocate until the root cause of their behavior is found. Apply their unique needs when a child cannot. In 2012, a guidance letter from the Department of Education states, "The foundation of any discussion about the use of restraint and seclusion is that every effort should be made to structure environments and provide supports that restraint and seclusion are not necessary." I also want to bring your attention to a fundamental communication error that is within special education. The communication options for families that is given during IEPs is giving incorrect information. It also has the intake coordinator for mediation that is incorrect and parent engagement leaders.
30 seconds.
Overall, I'm utterly disappointed in your actions as a school board to not listen to parents who voted you into your seat and who pay your salaries. Parents, staff, and students deserve a school board that is collaborative, that is responsive to the opportunity to be proactive, forward-thinking, inclusive to all children, including children with disabilities. And I leave you with several articles that substantiate this boy's death.
Please leave that, those with Sue.
Absolutely.
And she can distribute them in our packet this week.
Thanks. On my written test.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board of Education tonight? Okay, thank you for your comments. Moving on to our minute approval, we do have two minutes to approve. November 14th, regular board minutes. And then December 3rd, we had an executive session for an expulsion. Is there a motion to that decree?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brusink. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Any discussion or changes that need to be made in the minutes? Ms. Voight?
In the expulsion hearing for the second student, the vote, the motion passed 2 to 1 on the roll call vote.
Any other corrections? Changes? Got that, Sue? I don't want to interrupt your writing. Okay, okay. Will you please take the roll call vote?
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue. Moving on to our communications. Dr. Gray, did you receive any?
I got a whole bunch tonight. First one is from Dave Sternig, Commissioner of the Classic Aid Conference, and he's congratulating Waukesha North High School for sportsmanship awards for girls volleyball, girls cross-country, girls tennis, and girls golf. The second letter also from Mr. Sternig congratulating Waukesha South High School for sportsmanship's awards for girls tennis and girls golf. And the third letter from Mr. Sternig is congratulating Waukesha West for sportsmanship's awards for boys soccer and girls golf. The next set is from the Wisconsin Health and Physical Education Convention. The first one is they're congratulating Corey Schwartz for presenting at that event in, on October 25th and 26th. They're also congratulating Stephanie Florentine for presenting at that same convention on the 25th and 26th of October. And also Laura Kuntz for presenting again at the same conference, the Wisconsin Health and Physical Education Convention on October 25th and 26th. Next letter is from the Wisconsin High School Forensics Association, and they're extending congratulations to Kit Donahue and Eric Richards of South High School and the cast of the play The Laramie Project. They received the Critics' Choice Award at a recent competition there. And the final letter also from the Wisconsin High School Forensics Association congratulating Waukesha West High School and Nate Berish, their director, for the play Numbers, again receiving a Critics' Choice Award. I should also add outstanding acting from, from West, Reagan Carter, Sophie Housworth, Olivia Bonnell, Katie McCaskey, and then I should, I would be remiss in that reporting from South. Outstanding actors from South, Tanner Ohm, Jordan Levine, and Jude Kramer. So, a lot of very talented folks in all our schools, and we have the words to prove it.
That's great. We're going to have to a lot more time, you know, for this section of the meeting, so.
They all came at once.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's good news. Do you have anything else to...
That's it for, that's it for communications.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gray. And Diane Voight, do you have a report on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. First of all, WEF would like to thank Terry Schuster and Mary Jo King and all the rest of the School District of Waukesha staff who made the Saturday, December 1, We Are Waukesha event held at North High School from 10 to 1 a major success. As you saw in your packets, the open enrollment event had 800 attendees and 80 new students enrolled. The coaster that you were finding at your tables for the water bottle each, at each meeting is a reminder of the celebrating of excellence that went on at that event and in the future, the celebrating of excellence in the School District of Waukesha. Also at the We Are Waukesha event, the 2017 WEF grant recipients showcased the innovative projects that received $30,000 in grants that were implemented in the 2017-18 school year. Also at your desk, you'll find a packet of details on each of the projects, spelling out the project overview and the project outcome for each one of those grants. I truly enjoyed speaking with each of the recipients to discover their success stories. And this is my way to share their stories with you as an extension of my report in a lot less than two minutes. I have one related...
That's your birthday? We'll let you get away with it.
I have one related announcement that I'm very excited to share. The WEF Board approved their 2019 budget last week with a line item that will allow an additional $5,000 for grant distribution in 2019. That means $35,000 worth of grants will be available for competitive competition in, for competitive application, I should say, in April, which I think is awesome. The WEF Board also elected a new slate of officers. Nick Ainsley will serve as treasurer. Kim Dove will serve as vice president. And Ann Pascavis was elected the new WEF president. Each officer will serve a two-year term. The WEF Board also extended sincere appreciation to Jean Schumacher and Mark Ziegler for their leadership and years of service on the board. As Jean and Mark finish their terms, I want to announce that the WEF Board has recently welcomed Michelle Johnson, Samantha Sprung, and Kim Tinder to begin their three-year terms. One last thing, teachers that are listening, remember to wear your festive sweaters and blue jeans tomorrow. So far, the Casuals for Cause Days has raised $11,615, with two more Thursdays to go.
Great.
So, thank you for that initiative, by the way, on behalf of the staff. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Diane. Yeah, I saw Jean and Mark, and there was a little bit of overlap when I was on the WEF Board with them. And when they first came on the board, their energy and their knowledge, putting it to work, just kind of energized that group. And they've done a wonderful job. And there'll be some big shoes for, for the new officers to fill. But we look forward to continuing our partnership with the Waukesha Education Foundation, who's done a lot of good for this district. Thank you for your report. Moving on to the Charter, School, and Program Report given by Mr. Baumgart. What good things, did you witness this last month?
I got a couple. First on the STEM schools. Last week, the STEM Governance Board held their meeting, and this meeting was focused on their charter contract, which comes due in the middle of 2019. They did a very thorough job going through it that evening with some observations from me to help. I don't know if I helped or not, but we'll see. For the most part, there are only small adjustments to language terminology, things like the policy numbers, and our entire policy thing has been renumbered, so there's a lot of that in their work and other, a few actual operations. They hope to have a draft in a month or two and should be easily able to meet their June deadline, which, of course, will come back through us also. Still sticking with STEM, an additional point, and to validate the A and remember the STEAM. Okay. The Saratoga School will be holding a... deadline, which, of course, will come back through us also. Still sticking with STEM, an additional point, and to validate the A and remember the STEAM, okay? The Saratoga School will be holding a winter band and orchestra concert this, tomorrow, December 13th at 6:30 at, at South High School. And in a week from now, there will be a choir concert on December 20th at South High School at 7 o'clock. So you may want to check those out and make sure we're continuing the arcs, and we are in our, that charter school. Next item, I wanted to, a little bit of what Diane was also talking about, this is a slight deviation from what I normally often talk about in this thing, but this month, I feel is appropriate to give a big shout out to our enrollment team. Stephanie Peterson and her team had a well-prepared plan and did yeoman's work getting the enrollment process up and running and well-done last Saturday, or no, two Saturdays ago. If you hadn't, if you weren't there and you would have saw, if you would have sawed, must be a grammatical problem there, right? If you had seen what it was like in that enrollment room, it was wonderful. I mean, they were, they had it down. A few things they already figured out to do different next year, but believe me, they did a wonderful job and they deserve, next time you see Stephanie or any of those people down there, say, "Good job." And one last thing, I didn't get it on the script, but I forgot, thought about it later. Quite simply, you all received a email from our Benjamin Garbadian. If you haven't met him before, meet him, it's worth it. You received an email from Benjamin, by the way, he likes Benjamin, about the robotics event this Saturday at South High School. Robotics at the elementary school level will be taking place from 8 to 6 Saturday. You should have an email, check it out. Those things are kind of fun to attend. And, and Benjamin and the engineering team at, well, it's not at our high school level, is hosting this event on a-
For the elementary.
Yeah, not just our school, it's, it's around different districts, but you'll find that out when you get there. And that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Benjamin, just so you know, he is our AV gentleman in the back, and he does an excellent job, so if you see him and you're, you're trying to talk into the microphone and he can't hear you.
Yes.
He's, he's trying to give you a signal to, to talk louder. So, good job, Benjamin.
Yes.
And thank you for the invitation on Saturday, we appreciate that and your leadership. Moving on to the consent agenda, Darren, did we have any gifts given to us this month?
Yeah, two gifts. Woodyar Elementary School received $1,200 from Southminster Presbyterian Church to be used for needy Woodyar students and families. And Hanfield Elementary School received $1,000 from the Waukesha County Community Foundation to be used as determined by the principal.
Thank you. Thank you for those. Your generosity is always appreciated. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity in a minute here. The, the packet also includes items for approval on an expulsion decision that was made on December 3rd. Confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions was in your Friday packet along with the minutes included under item number 1H. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we do have an executive session at the end of this meeting, if necessary. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Does anybody want to set that aside for, or anything aside for separate consideration? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Reinacek, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of one retirement, one resignation, one leave of absence, and three new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed on your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Amanda, any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Karen?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Gray, you're up again.
Thanks. A couple of reminders. First of all, if you've not signed up for the WASB convention, which is mid-January, and you do have decided you want to go, please see, or contact Sue, she can sign you up. I know some people have already registered, but if you, if you've decided you'd like to go, Sue can get you signed up for that.
Not now.
Another reminder, on the 21st, 9:15 is the South Holiday Concert. If you've not ever been to that, you need to go, it's just an absolutely wonderful event. It's, it's chorus, orchestra, band, and they do just an absolute fantastic job. It's a, it's a great way to kick off the holidays. I would also like to extend my thanks to both Gene Schumacher and Mark Ziegler for WF. When they came on, I think, I think the WF was probably struggling a little bit, number one for identity and certainly for financially, and, and they both hung in there and really did a nice job of building it up. They met with myself and I think Mr. Como and said, "Here's what we want to do," and sure enough, they, they did it. So thankfully, they're still in the area, and they've, they've said they are available for consultation, so who knows, we may see more of them. But they, they did just an absolutely wonderful job for our educational foundation, so thank you. Enrollment event, we noticed that, we, we, you had heard that there were 80 new enrollments, that's up from 30 the prior year, so, so next year, we should be about 160.
Absolutely.
Did you just set a goal?
Yeah, yeah. No, it was, it was a really nice event for, all around, we had all our schools there, so, you know, parents who maybe thought, being an open choice district, it gave parents a chance to talk to different principals and teachers from other schools who they might have had an interest in. We had Santa Claus, a really good Santa Claus, and a lot of pictures with Santa Claus, the bouncy house, so there was a lot of fun things going on. And the only thing I did miss were the really good cookies. I missed out on that one somehow.
I think you were listening to the avid students from higher, because you had the courage to double the goal for next year.
And speaking of avid, I just, I have recently returned from the, the National Avid Conference, where I was part of the Superintendent's Collaborative, along with 24 other superintendents from around the US, helping them plan. We had two days of planning, listening to what some of their future plans are, and also commenting on those plans, and, and believe it or not, some of the, some of the messages back were, keep your, your core work, your core work, you know, try not to get too watered down in all these other areas that, that, that actually many districts are doing already. And I think what was really encouraging is there were a lot of districts with very similar demographics, both, both in terms of minority and poverty as to us, and, and the, the success rate with avid, these were districts that have been using avid for a number of years, were very, very impressive. So I'm very encouraged, I think this is a, a good way to go. You also notice that the, the kids out there had, had journals, and, you know, part of avid, there's, there's, I don't know if you want to call it classical education, but there is still using these with, with paper. And, you know, I think the research says that that, there is some, still some good things to be had, it's not, you know, we, we don't need to jump everything into technology. So very encouraged about it, very, very honored to be part of that collaborative and, and help frame where avid is going and making sure that they're keeping the important stuff, the, the important stuff. So that's my report.
We appreciate you representing us and sharing ideas and moving this forward. Thank, thank you for your leadership on that. Mr. Brian?
Mr. Como, I just wanted to, I guess dovetail off the superintendent's report, I did get the WASB packet with the resolutions. I'll probably ask Sue to make a copy and distribute to board members so they know what these proposed resolutions are and if there's any comments to get back. We did have the school safety resolution, ours was put forth along with a couple others. There is a school safety resolution in here. It's not what we offered or others offered, but it's what they came up with, and I think it's something that I feel most board members could probably be okay with. But I think it's a good idea for people to take a look at all the resolutions and provide your feedback as you wish, so.
Thank you, Kurt. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our committee reports. As you know, we rotate our committees every month. And first up this month is our Policy Committee given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. Well, this is another present for the holidays for you guys. We have nothing to report on tonight, just don't get used to it. Joe and Lynn have informed me that they have a stack of, of policies that we will be getting into, we just weren't, weren't ready for it, because a lot of it is requiring some look-through the executive team here, so that'll be happening. And as such, we will not be having a Policy Meeting Committee next Tuesday. We've just, as of today, we decided that just, we're bringing you in for no particular reason, so another present for the holidays. My gosh, am I a good Santa Claus? Okay, that's my, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to Technology, given by Mr. Dietz.
Nothing to report on this evening, Mr. President. However, our next meeting is Wednesday, January 16th at 5:00 PM here at Room 109.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. Brian.
Boy, that happened fast.
He's, he's not ready.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for the excessively long Facilities and Finance Committee meeting on Monday night, it's really outside the norm. We had an information item, that means I have to make the report really short tonight to make it up. Monthly Budget Report, the committee was presented the budget report for the month of November, $586,042 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $10,646,895 was expended during the month. There was $895,464 reported in the Special Education Fund Revenue, and $1,416,527 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projections in other areas. The second item was our 2017-2018 Audit Report. This is the highlight of my report, so we got an audit. Paying attention. From David McCoo of the CPA of Schenk SC. Each year, school districts are required to have a financial audit conducted on the completion of their fiscal year, ending June 30th. Mr. David McCoo, shareholder from Schenk SC, presented the 2017-18 financial statements. There were no internal deficiencies to report to the board, nor were there any compliance issues to report, and it was about as clean as you can get. It's important to note that the financial statements are made available on the district's website for the public review. We always ask for a grade, it's the Mr. Warren legacy, a grade from our auditor. Last year, we received a B+, which is not a bad grade, nobody should be embarrassed by a B+, but this year, he gave us an A.
All right.
So this is the first A I think we've ever received from our auditor. I think he looked at our fund balance, our OPEB obligations and all these things, and, we're just in, and very little debt at this point in time, we're just in a very sound financial condition compared to almost all the other districts across state. And Mr. Gray is saying we're going to get the very best credit rating.
We're, we're looking for an A+ from Standard and Poor's, so.
Yeah, so, so that was great news. Onto discussion items, we had a lot of visitors the other night, and I think we had like six or seven speakers, and one discussion item was the Tax Increment District, TID number 14. As you know, Mr. Como is our representative on the TID board. Kevin Laundner, City Administrator from the City of Waukesha, discussed a TID amendment being considered for the expansion of TID number 14. TID number 14 is the shops on, on Sunset, and its potential impact on the school district of Waukesha. Each taxing authority impacted by a TID is allowed to have one voting member on the Oversight Board. As I said, this, our member is Mr. Como. The purpose of the agenda item is to provide feedback to Mr. Como prior to his eventual vote. The expansion of the TID that's being proposed by the City of Waukesha is expanded over on the other side of West to include Mendola Park to develop, you know, amongst other things, the baseball park and a turf soccer field. Right now, there's a $900,000 cash excess of the district's share, would be $900,000 if they were to suddenly close it out today and do no further development. It's a complicated issue, we've given our feedback to Mr. Como and this, and we've advised them that Mr. Como will be making the final decision when he votes. Second item was Facility Use Guidelines. The committee discussed the changes to the Facility Use Guidelines, including the application process, user and administrative responsibilities, fee determination, scheduling criteria. The scheduling timeline makes the high school athletic directors in charge of scheduling youth groups within their pod with oversight from the business office. The process of proprietary school district needs first, followed by SDW-approved partnerships such as youth and theater programs. This remains a topic that's under discussion, not completely settled yet, and will, will be continuing. We did have a long, a number of topics caught, covered in closed session, and if we, if any board member would like to discuss that, please take it up with the board president, and we can decide whether we need to proceed in that manner. But that would also have to be done in closed session, so. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Mr. Baumgart.
Was it, was it the, the TID meeting in open session or closed session? Because I have a question.
It was in open session.
Okay. There's one thing I didn't understand, as I've been reading about this and hearing about this, they want to expand the TID in more territory, and that would delay us getting that defeasance money, or that $900,000 you're talking about.
Right, and, you know, Mr. Como will correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't really, it's not clear we'd ever get any money if they, you know, they could, they could actually say, "We'll leave it as it is and, and take those funds and apply it to more development within the existing TID."
Yes.
So if they were just close it out with no additional development, we'd get $900,000. But the city has the right to determine whether they do more development, when they close out the TID and all that stuff. Expanding the TID requires a vote from the committee.
Okay, but here's my concern, because there's a lot of money that we stand to lose on a bet that we don't know how good it's going to be. If we, I guess what I want to understand, I don't know if this is a technical issue that you can't do or not, close the TID, 20th, right, 2020?
Go ahead.
Is that correct?
It can be closed.
It's open, it's open right now, and the city-
Plan date was 2020.
No, more than that.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-seven, I think.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven is the expansion.
That's, that's the, that's, that's the latest you can go on a TID, it's 27 years, which would be-
Why, why can't that TID be closed whenever they close it, and they'd have another one if they really want to go ahead with that baseball field?
You can correct me if I'm wrong. The city is the one that can make the decision whether to close the TID and when.
That is their decision.
The board does not have, the TID board does not have that decision.
Joint Review Board, yeah.
Joint Review Board. The city has that decision, right? It's in their boundaries, it's essentially their TID to manage. So we don't have, none of the members have the ability to tell them to either keep the bid open or to close it.
So what do we vote on?
We vote on whether it can be expanded or modified. So they're asking, because they want to use the, the, the success of the TID 14, they want to expand it to another broader area, because it will help pay for things that would be hard to pay for in a standalone TID to cover Mendola Park. So that's what the city is requesting of the board, is to allow to expand it, and when they expand it, they could extend it.
So if Joe gets to vote on, on whether we expand it or not, is that what you're saying?
Right, that's what the vote is for.
And I assume five other, four other people get to vote on that, too.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess I come back to that same point, if they don't get approval to expand it, then that piece of property is no longer going to be included in the TID, right?
Correct.
So they would have to-
Well, it's not in the TID right now.
I know. So, so that's my question. If, if it doesn't get expanded because of the vote, and they decide to establish a new TID for that area?
Yes. Yes, they can.
Yeah, so-
Takes an awful lot more sense to me when I'm worried about $900,000 worth of education.
Yeah, so, and that was actually at the very first Joint Review Board held on the 28th of November, that was exactly what, one of the first points that was asked at that Joint Review Board, is would this TIF, the new, if, if you just took the amended portion and had it as a standalone TIF and not an amendment to TIF 14, would you be able The projects and the financial situation would not support that standing on its own. And essentially, they're dependent upon expanding TIF 14 in order to pay for the projects that they want to move forward with.
Let me, let me try to be just a little bit more clear, yet succinct. We have a TID. The decision choices to expand it or leave it as it is. If they leave it as it is, doesn't mean we get $900,000. Could mean we would, could mean we wouldn't. It depends on how they want to exercise the existing TID, because they can still do additional development within the existing TID.
Within the territory.
Right, within the territory. So, that is generally the purpose of a TID. If you look at it, generally, we've never gotten funds out of a TID. It usually just devolves and closes.
We have received defecence.
Yeah, but generally, we don't get a lot of funds out of a TID. And we're not guaranteed any funds in this particular case. The decision as to whether to expand the TID is up to the board, and there's five votes. And the city is advocating strongly for expanding the TID. At this point in time, they've said that that's the best and only option, they feel, to proceed with a TID to develop Mendola Park as if they expanded this TID. That's the city's position. We're concerned about the money as a school district.
And about, if they did expand it, that more territory, first of all, there would be nothing available on a soon, wherever the sooner point is. And second of all, they might not do very well in that. I mean, come on, building stadiums. Well, that's, you just know where I feel on it.
It doesn't generate any tax revenue.
Pardon?
It doesn't generate any tax revenue, it's owned by the city. So, that's why I can't stand alone.
I believe the committee's feedback to Mr. Como is that we weren't very supportive of the idea of expanding the TID. And so, it's not like your position is much different than the other members of the committee in general.
Now, I feel better. I'm trying to get a point across.
Yeah, it's, from a financial perspective, it makes more sense for us to let the TID as is right now either be closed by the city. The projection is if the city decided to close it in 2019, there would be $2.5 million available in defecence that would be distributed between the county, the city, WCTC, and us. There's only four, because the fifth person on the Joint Review Board is actually a citizen at large to represent the community.
There's four.
And that's Mike Payne this time around. He was voted on. So, our portion of that would be $980,000 roughly, so roughly a million dollars. And that, the key point is, that's outside of our revenue cap. We never get anything outside of our revenue cap. So, it doesn't count towards our revenue cap, which is good. Even better. Mr. O'Brien.
And, you know, I, I try not to make a judgment on what the city does in their development plans. You know, I just look at dollars and cents for the most part. We did have citizen comment at the front end. There is a very similar project being done in Peewaiki, privately financed, I guess, for the most part. And they were expressing, they were expressing that they didn't feel this was a good idea, obviously, because they're going to be doing one in Peewaiki. How many of these do we need, right? And our point also was a concern that part of it was soccer fields. I feel we have enough turf soccer fields already. So, it's kind of, it's kind of an odd, an odd proposal. I mean, I understand the need to develop that area. I bike through it all the time. It does need development. I'm not sure this is the right proposal. It could maybe be scaled down, and maybe they could do a TID that would work for them. But the way they're looking at it, to me, doesn't look like it's well thought out.
Yeah, so, our next Joint Review Board is going to be Tuesday morning, January 5th, at 8 o'clock. That's at City Hall. And that's where we're going to have, we had a number of questions on November 28th as a Joint Review Board that we asked of the city. They're going to be bringing more information to the Joint Review Board. But at this time, you know, I would not be in favor of passing the TID 14 amendment based upon everybody's input. It's really in our best interest to not move forward with the amendment.
Thank you. That's what I was waiting to hear.
Okay. Any other discussion on either of those? You had two discussion items, right, Mr. O'Brien?
Right, but let's just be clear, that's why our meeting went until 10 o'clock. So, I don't want, I don't want this meeting to go at another hour discussing F and F.
What was the other one?
The other one?
Not on the agenda.
The use, it was the facilities.
Facility use. Facility use guidelines.
Have it.
Yeah.
Put it on here.
Didn't that translate?
That's still in discussion. Nothing's been decided yet. There's really not the time to go into that in depth right now.
Anything else, Mr. O'Brien?
No, concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on December 4th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. We have one action item, two information items, and two discussion items that appear on the agenda. Our action item is the annual approval of at-risk identification plan. This plan requires annual approval. Luke Pinion took the committee through processes and procedures for identifying children at risk of not graduating from high school in grades 5 through 12. On a vote of 5 to 0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the at-risk identification plan as presented. We request board approval and ISO move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Brzingk. She was loudest. So, you won. Any discussion?
I'd like to say something.
Yes, Mrs. Brzingk.
I just want the board to know that this is a very comprehensive plan in helping at-risk identification of students. It's phenomenal, really. For many, many years, school districts didn't do much in this regard, and we're doing a lot for those kids. So, congratulations to our district. Job well done.
Were there many changes? This is pretty much what we did last year?
Well, there's not many changes, but it's just something that we're doing that's so extraordinary, I think.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, will you please take the roll call vote on approving the annual at-risk identification plan, Sue?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Brzingk.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0?
All right, thank you. Our first information item is the school mental health update. Luke Pinion presented an update on the school-based mental health services throughout the district. These updates included extensive expansion of the path providing access to healing program at Whittier, Blair, Hadfield, Banting, Horning, and at South. He addressed the various funding models and associated services. The update also included the Competitive DPI, the Competitive DPI School Mental Health Grant the school district applied for and was awarded. The focus of this grant was elementary mental health, including completing our universal social-emotional learning curriculum at all elementary schools. It also included providing a community mental health therapist at Bethesda, Hawthorne, Lowell, Hire, and Prairie in order to further support mental health needs. There is a sustainability plan in place and a plan for growing the school district's school-based mental health services. Our next information item was the East Alternative School update. Tara Rogers gave an extensive update on school improvements, goals from East's Theory of Action Program options, student enrollment, and celebrations. A copy of the presentation was provided in your board update last week. Our first discussion item was the Sunday Reading update. Jason Gehan and teachers Laura Edwards and Mary Ann Kirsch shared gradual growth in test scores that students with IEPs have realized, and additionally, literacy growth evidenced from a cohort of students that have participated in the Sunday Reading Intervention for the past one to two years. Jason then provided next steps planned for consistent progress monitoring going forward. Our second discussion item was the school report card data. Amy Revo provided an overview of the 2017-18 district and school report cards from the Department of Public Instruction. At the foundation of other report cards are four priority areas: student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and on-track and post-secondary readiness. Three years of assessment data from the Wisconsin Forward Exam, ACT, and the Dynamic Learning Maps are used in the report card calculation. A copy of Amy's presentation was provided in your board update last week. Discussion item, so. Is there any discussion about any of these two? No? That concludes my report for the Teaching and Learning Committee. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 8th, 2019.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Moving on to Safety and Security, given by Amanda Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Safety and Security Committee last met on November 15th. We had three information items on our agenda. They're as follows. Update on the school safety grant application. The district received funding from round one and two of the safety grants. Round one included safety film on the glass and perimeter security. Administration is in the process of obtaining bids for building segmentations and security path, secure pathways, excuse me. Door strike software to prevent door propping is also being looked at. The second item is update on the safety training in August of 2019. School violence threat assessment training and adolescent mental health training. The safety grant requires that 10% of the district professional staff be trained to in-school violence threat assessment and adolescent mental health. That equates to around 100 staff members in Waukesha. The mental health training includes 12 hours of in-service and will provide staff early signs of mental health, abuse, and addiction so that students can refer, can be referred for help. The assessment training will be provided to up to 150 staff members and includes how to assess the risk level associated with a threat and the appropriate response. We received additional funds to pay for the training through the Department of Justice. And the last item is an update on the Raptor Visitor Management System. Raptor is a visitor management system that does a background check when visitors provide an office, excuse me, an official ID with a barcode on it. The National Sex Offender Database is checked, and the office, staff, and administration are notified if someone is on that database and should be prevented from entering school. Training has been provided to all staff involved using the Raptor system. This system is currently being used at all of the schools. That concludes the three information items. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting is scheduled for January 17th of 2019. And if there are no questions, it's an information item, that would complete my report.
Thank you, Amanda. Thanks for the hard work that went into the grant applications. That was a lot of work. Paid off, though, hopefully, or will be. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Karen Reinacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I only have one thing to report this evening, and it's that I forgot to mention that it was Chris Hedstrom that is leaving us and retiring. And she's irreplaceable and is going to be greatly missed. And she's going to be with us to find a replacement, but that's going to be hard to do. So, thank you, Chris, for all of your years with us. Eight, I believe.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to work here, and it was a hard decision, but something that I'm looking forward to. So, thank you.
She's got seven more months, so let's not get her emotional.
I'm taking vacation.
We're not letting her go, really.
You have a lot of overtime scheduled for her? Is that what you said?
Yeah. I think in the future, on, on human resources, we should put administrators as a separate item, action item, just the recommendation.
We'll see if she still speaks so well of us after seven more months.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, there actually was, at the committee level, a number of us wanted to walk out of the meeting and not take a vote on that particular item, so we would have her here for more time, but we decided against that. Okay, moving on to other business. Are there any recommendations for future full Board of Education meetings or recommendations given to our committee chairs for consideration? Okay, seeing none. We do not have a need to go in for item B for closed session. I don't think we need C or D.
Mr. Como, I think it'd only take us five or 10 minutes under C or D. I mean, there's been a lot of community interest in, well, at least one or both of these.
You can make a motion.
Yeah. I moved to adjourn to, in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, PRC 1G to confer district's legal counsel, who is running oral written advice concerning strategy involving, with respect to which, with respect to litigation, which the district is likely to become involved. And I also have moved as well to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85-1E for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Seconded.
For two reasons, two motions, two reasons.
Is there?
Both motions.
Two motions?
Yes.
Well, it's one motion, two.
One motion for both.
Two areas of topic, is what I would say.
You make the motion for one?
One, yeah.
I'll make the second for one.
All right.
Got you. It's one motion.
One motion.
For two.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, that's a roll call vote, Sue.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Brzingk.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0?
It's only going to be a five.
We'll go into closed session immediately.